Hey buddy, you ready for a good show today?
Should we make it transparent where they can see us turn this like just a little bit?
Might be kind of fun.
Getting ready for the show.
Yeah. I think you've heard. Yes.
So not only can we.
It's a good day.
It is, I love it.
Hey, 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 we're here.
We're back, I love it.
You do?
Like you never even left.
Like I never even left, bro.
It finally happened too, the running joke that I always tell guests when we have on coming into the into the show here, we're always supposed to be, you can't see us during the countdown, we're supposed to be muted, we weren't muted today.
Yeah, so why is that buddy?
I probably did something, I have no idea.
When I left?
I don't know what I hit or what I did.
Is this September?
I had to do something.
Were you trying to cancel me?
Cause I understand what I'm doing with technology stuff.
I made some good decisions in my life.
What'd you do?
Not, I didn't say anything bad.
That's good, yeah, no, neither, we were just talking about like, should we make it so they can see us? Well, they can hear us this time, that is hilarious, I don't know.
I don't know if they can actually hear us, so we're listening to it right now, you can put it here in the background. It's really hard for them to hear us.
It's, it's, we have to be right up to the, it's, it's the principle and I love it. But thanks everyone for joining.
We do have an audio issue this morning.
Uh oh.
Dude, why did you do while I was gone?
Is the music still playing?
No.
Is that playing?
No, just, just relax buddy.
I'm trying.
I see, we figured out our audio issue.
Uh oh, this is what happens when Kyler gets left alone.
Yeah, so hopefully that's fixed guys, sorry about that, I'm sorry about.
Real, real echoey there to start, our apologies as always with the audio issues, Kyler came in this time and I must have fat fingered some buttons when Jonathan was gone.
Who knows if he did, it could have been me too.
I'm gonna accept the blame, cause we're gonna move on and we're gonna start talking about our show today, so we've got some fun stuff to talk about, obviously big, big thing to lead off with, city manager Harold Stewart.
That's big.
Yep, is going to be leaving, he's stepping down, going to be moving into the same role in Pasco, Washington.
Yeah, we were the, I believe the first was reported that he was a finalist for that job.
Yeah, I, I regret I was at work last night, so I couldn't break the news, but I believe.
I think he broke the news.
Technically he did, yes.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure he broke it.
Well, I mean, onto social media, I think actually Lisa, Hermosillo was the one.
Go Lisa!
Social media, as far as I could find, so congrats to Lisa.
Friend of the show, she was on.
Thanks for coming on last Tuesday, she was at city council meeting last night, got a chance to see her again.
We need more people like that, show up.
It's fun.
Listen, take it in.
Fun probably isn't the right word.
Right.
I find it fun.
Anyways though, this is gonna leave a gaping hole, some will say it's time, because there's always the detractors in life, but the fact of the matter is, we're gonna have a new mayor, a new police chief, a new city manager, we won't have a new city manager, it's gonna take like six months.
Yeah, he's here until September 19th, and then I assume there's gonna be a solid process that's gonna go through with how to find his replacement from then on, and I, I would lean towards at this point, probably assistant manager sit Tom Joy, assistant city manager, Tom Joyce is probably the front runner, but who knows what that process will end up looking like, if they're gonna wanna go do a whole nationwide search similar to the one they did for the police chief, or if this is gonna be something that they just want to get over with as soon as they can and just promote from within.
I have a question for you, when was the last time we had a qualified president of the United States, qualified to be president of the United States?
Probably George Bush Senior?
Maybe, yeah, and that didn't go well.
I know, yeah, not saying it went well, but.
Idea that we should take a deep look at expanding the role of mayor and having an assistant city manager, maybe change the name of it, to make it a little more broad for theirs, to kind of expand that role where they maybe help head up day to day, but have an assist, have a mayor that is at the office almost every day, however that needed to look, or he is more involved in that stuff.
Yeah, even if it's not something like, you know, them, them completely taking on the role of it, just having a more active role in the day to day life of everything, that would be interesting to see.
Yeah, I think it's nearly, I think it's time, and that's not, that's, to be clear, I'm not advocating, I'm not advocating for us to go and just expand the role of mayor right, as it is right now, I'm saying that like, they actually have more influence in this.
Make, make them what the perception of the mayor is, everybody thinks the mayor is the one that leads the drive to do things, they're the ones that set the tone for everything, and not saying that they're not, but so much of that is held by the city manager internally, in the way Minot system is set up right now, maybe give them a little bit more of the ability to actually set the tone, like still have the city manager, whatever the role would be in this case, run the day to day stuff, but have the mayor there as more, as a more active presence.
But, but if we have an assistant city manager and a city manager, then, yeah, go and you, the city manager would then be leaving, so you'd have the mayor go and pick up some of that slack.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's a fair, fair way to look at it, without over expanding the role or anything, or completely changing the way that the city.
Shouldn't be, it's, it'd be, it's a terrible word to use, but it shouldn't be a dictatorship or anything like that, that's not what I'm like hinting at with that.
I wouldn't say, yeah, give the mayor veto power or anything like that at this stage, but.
Oh Kyler, oh Kyler.
But at this point, I, I think a couple, a little bit of an expansion wouldn't hurt.
Right, so that's something that they should look at, obviously they can't look at it basically, because there's a mayoral race going on and three of the council members are in that race, so the, any, anything like that would look at, kinda like packing the Supreme Court, it would look like you're trying to consolidate power.
Yeah, without a doubt.
So, that's something though, that I, in my opinion, should be looked at, especially as we transition, really, how to off to Harold Stewart, we'll be trying to set up an interview or something with him, before he heads out of town, but honestly, I've, I've enjoyed him, I feel like he's overall been pretty good, I know that the last six to eight months have been pretty hard, whether that's inside the city itself, and managing the expectations from council, or if that's just the amount of turmoil that the city has gone through.
Everything together at that point, yeah.
Been a tough bit.
Hasn't, hasn't, yeah, the last, I mean, maybe not quite year, but 10 months probably at this point, I mean, it's been, it's been one thing after another, and guess what, we're in the national headlines again dude, we're going in again!
I know, right, we're, we're getting good at this. I, I guess.
Do you want my hot take now?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
My, my hot take is this B-52 story is the most overblown, out of proportion story.
Come on, bro.
In like 10 years, since, remember, remember back, like, I think it was like 10, 12 years ago, when ISIS released a list of, of potential target cities?
We're going on everything today.
In, well, but I'm just saying, they released a potential list of target cities that they wanted to attack in the US, and we were like the only one in North Dakota, remember people freaking out about that?
I remember that.
And I think that obviously in hindsight, that was overblown, I thought it was then, and now I think this is the most.
Why, why is overblown? You don't, you don't think a B-52 heading at a commercial jet is a big deal?
If anything, the commercial jet was heading at the B-52.
That's not what it said, they said that the B-52 was headed, they looked at the right side and there was a B-52 headed for them.
And they had to make a big move, I don't know, I think it's dumb, I, I, I think it's dumb that it happened, cause this is a, you, okay, let's, let's start, let's stop, let's, let's start over.
Yeah, yeah, start over.
What happened?
Yeah, that, what happened, what happened here Kyler?
Let's, let's start at the beginning, so on Friday night, first night at the fair, we, oh my gosh, we have the first night of the fair, you, you have Governor Kelly Armstrong at the state fair auditorium, or the fairgrounds, he's, he's now giving a opening up the fair to the first concert going on, Minot's getting inducted as a great military city, and we have a B-52 flyover that's taking place, something.
Wonderful, beautiful.
Something that had been known for a while, I, I don't know exactly when it was announced, but it's not like it was that day kind of thing.
Yeah.
So, you, you have this all taking place right around like 6, 7 o'clock at night, and at the same time, you have commercial air traffic coming into Minot, which again, granted, this isn't something that, or that happens that frequently in Minot, we have like eight flights a day coming in here, if that.
Right, we never have B-52 flyers.
Not, not to that degree.
Not, not over the fair, but we do see B-52 flying overs.
We frequently see B-52s in the air, but never at that low of an altitude and never probably through that path.
Yeah, I think the biggest though is through that path.
Yeah, and, cause it was right in the path of the, the commercial airline that was coming in, the Delta flight.
To land.
Yeah, and he had to make an invasive right turn, he had to bank to the right to avoid it, and.
See, I think, I think if you had a hot take on this, cause I think it is a big deal, I think it's a big deal, so the story.
It's becoming a big deal.
Story has it that Minot Airport doesn't have radar, and so they go by visual, and then the story has it that Air Force Base does have radar, and then I believe in their statement, and I didn't read the full statement, but it kinda, Air Force Base was kinda saying like, yeah, we didn't know about the flight, so like, cause, and it's like, wait a minute, you guys have radar, you guys don't know about the, like, you guys are that easily attacked, you just going out for a stroll and you don't care about anybody else in the air?
And there's a flip side too, from that statement, that it's, it saw like, that it seemed like they had been in contact with Minot Air Traffic Control that same day, and they weren't told about a flight coming, so I think there's.
That could be a miscommunication, could be.
It's a two-way street here.
Still crazy that they're not checking radar.
Yeah, 100% because.
Still crazy that they're heading towards a, and this is, I don't, obviously I've never flown a plane, obviously, right? But this whole deal where just planes hit the sides of other planes, like what happens to the pilots while they're flying?
Yeah? I, I don't know.
I don't know either, because it seems like they don't, aren't able to see other planes.
Yeah, it's, it's gonna be a limited space and you're moving so quickly at that point.
You're moving so quickly, but I mean, you, if you see some, you, you see nothing, though, in traffic, you see cars all around.
Yeah.
Right, and so the worst thing that can happen is somebody unexpectedly goes into your lane, and you're like, alright, now what do I do? In the air, you see nothing.
And when you actually do see something in the air, it's such a shock, cause you're not supposed to see anything at that point, so when you even see something within visual.
Right, you should be like, wait a minute, this is a situation here, let's worry about this, but evidently you don't, that's not a thing you do, we should talk to a pilot so we can get some better information on this, yes, the industry, the FAA and DOD have been playing hot potato with responsibility, agreed, I think.
FAA is launching a full investigation into the situation, I did see that, they're going to have to determine if it was within a close miss.
I have a hot take for you though.
Let's hear your hot take.
On that situation, I think I would like your hot take better, which I don't have to like your hot take, cause that's the point, it's a hot take, okay? If you said that the the pilot in the plane overreacted, what about it wasn't that close? Did you see the video that a fair bystander at the fair had?
Yeah.
And it's like, you see that, and then like, all of a sudden it almost cuts to the B-52 them flying over, and it makes it feel like they weren't that close at all, because the way that the story has is like, dude, like, we're within seconds of, yeah. So a hot take would be that it really wasn't that close, it was just that a regional, a guy, a pilot is flying a regional plane, it's going great, and then out of nowhere.
Coming into land.
There's a B-52 that he sees, he's like, what in the world is that? And so he reacts by doing an invasive maneuver, and maybe the invasive, that would be a hot take, I don't know that that happened, okay? I'm not saying that, I think the pilot did great, I think that the fact that there was no casualties is incredible.
The right thing took, the right and the best outcome happened.
And I agree with Lisa, I think it's also a concern that could catastrophic tragedy that could have happened with thousands of people at the fair, that would have been terrible for a B-52 flyover to turn into, that would have been horrific, I was thinking about that once I found out that it was over the fair, like dude, this is, this is, that, that's really scary.
Okay, so, worst case, yeah, it crashes into the grandstands.
Okay, that's very bad.
Yeah.
Very bad case Kyler.
I think the more likely situation, it probably would, if, if a midair collision occurs at that point, they probably crash into residential neighborhoods, probably that.
No, that would be all, all industrial behind it, right?
Well, depends on where they're moving towards, cause if, if, if the.
But where, where you saw the, but where you saw the plane, the SkyWest or Delta was coming.
From the south.
South, southeast to the airport, and so that's flying over like Wilbur Ellis, the Coke, not the Coke, but.
Yeah, the Coke, Coke area, I guess Jefferson Trailer Court would be like the.
But that, that would be way out there, I feel like, cause the B-52 is coming straight over that stuff.
Straight from the east, yeah.
Straight from the east and it's coming straight over industrial, so if they met, it would be over mostly industrial and that would have moved.
Probably, yeah, it would be a lot more, lot closer to.
People's cars may have gotten ruined.
Or the, that, that Seab Company behind.
Yeah, well, I think it's Wilbur Ellis.
Right to the east of the fairgrounds there, yeah, I was thinking it would have ended up, everything, that's, that's not how things work, everything crashes and it just continues moving to the.
But even if it continued, because it continued to the airport more.
I, I, yeah, I, I'm mapping stuff out internally a little bit better here, I was thinking it would have hit like, you know, where Railway Avenue goes over there, that would have been, that's too far.
No matter what, it would have been so terrible, and FAA does not need more of that stuff on its hands right now.
Not at all, and I think, yeah, so much of the fault is gonna come down to, was it a miscommunication? Who was supposed to handle the air traffic at that point, and where, how, how do you, how do you determine that, like, cause in theory, is the Air Force going to hand over their air traffic control of the B-52 to the civilian controller? I, I don't know how that works, it feels like that's probably not the case, but.
Probably not.
And then on the flip side, at what point is that civilian air traffic controller supposed to intervene with the regularly scheduled flights and this B-52 coming in?
Yeah, no, that, that's, because you wonder about like, should there have been a protected air put down, so then they would have to fly around?
And also, just the sheer coincidence that it happened at literally that exact moment, like, because again, we have like seven, eight flights that come in here a day, so the fact that this flyover is taking place at the exact moment that you have one of these handful of flights coming to the land, like, why not Minot, what are the odds of that, like, come on?
Yeah, for sure.
Such a miniscule thing.
They didn't stream, the more we find out, the more I think, right Jonathan, no one is giving specifics about elevation and actual proximity, people are just hypersensitive to situations like this after DC, that's the truth.
Yes.
That's the truth.
That is, speaking facts there.
Um, very good, Charlotte Moore drops a comment that kind of outlined some of the difficulties that the Minot Air Force Base has had over the last 15 years.
There's been a lot, yeah, I can't read the stuff, I mean, I can see the.
Lost nuclear equipment, stuff like that, remember?
Remember that, yeah, or remember the time that we, we flew a B-52 over the US with armed, with active groups onboard, like that was a trip? Well, W was still president.
That was definitely a trip, that was 2007.
Yeah.
Trip of a lifetime right there.
So many people got fired over that.
It was probably just one person's fault too.
Probably, like literally one maintenance guy that was supposed to.
Maintenance guy or, or, or somebody that had a big title that they didn't wanna lose.
Yeah, and then lo and behold, yeah, just, just get place cleaned out, that was a wild time, there was some other stuff too.
Good times folks, good times.
It is, fairs in town, fairs in session.
Yep, B-52 got that kicked off.
Literally, you wanna stick at the fair, you wanna run back to city council?
I would love to go to the fair.
I'm going to the fair today.
You are? What are you gonna do there?
I'm gonna do a lot, I'm gonna eat food, I'm gonna go walk around and look at stuff, I'm gonna, I, I, I should do polling, I should, I should wander around, ask people if they wanna take my poll, but I don't know how how motivated I'm feeling that right now, but I should, I have it ready, I might put it out on Facebook or something.
Zach says, Air Force Public Affairs is saying they register with ATC, but what's confusing to me is the base has radar or whatnot, they have seen the two aircraft approaching one another and had comms going out.
Yeah, that's kind of my thought, is who, who like had the actual, like handoff between the two air traffic controllers between the base and the civilian, cause in theory, if the base has radar and they're the one in charge, they should be making some kind of announcement regardless, and on the flip side, if it gets handed over to the civilian air traffic control, they should have every knowledge that this plane is coming in on the flight path, regardless if you have radar or visual flight or not, you should have an idea that it's gonna be coming in right near where the, the speed 52 is going.
Right.
It feels, yeah.
So I wonder how hard it is for visual to see that far? I know this is like almost a dumb question.
Yeah, I have no idea what.
Cause that feels like it's pretty far away from the airport, and it feels like there's a lot in the way, and if the planes are getting low, it might be hard to see.
Like I think from the, just the vantage point of the air traffic control tower, you can probably see it, but it's just gonna be a speck kind of thing.
You think you can see the fairgrounds from the air traffic control?
I bet if you have binoculars, yeah.
Wow.
Actually, because of the way that ridge works in North Hill, it's probably obscured, but like you could see, I bet you could see the B-52 that went over the fairgrounds clear as day.
I understand that it's not flying like below that ridge, but that B-52 is flying low too, it's not necessarily in your
And again.
Standard.
Yeah, the odds of that, just because it's going so low, and the only reason you have an issue is because this plane is going into its landing pattern, and again, it's just.
Just so unique, alright, it's parade, or, or I mean.
Parade did happen, I was, I was there, yeah, I was on Saturday.
Yeah, you enjoy it, anything weird happen?
No.
That's not what I heard, but okay, we'll go with it.
Nothing obscure took place, it went off as it should.
Interesting.
No one put up a stink or anything.
Well, that's good, you enjoy reading all those things?
Oh dude, it was so fast paced at certain points, cause.
Can it keep your Kyler voice going?
It was hard, and you have such a, like it's me and this one lady that I'm doing it with, her name is Cheryl, shout out Cheryl, she's a legend, she's on the state fair committee, has been for like 30 some years, she's a legend. However, you're given a readout, like we have a booklet of all the parade entries, and they have a little description that you're supposed to read for each of them when they go by, well, some of these, it's like a paragraph plus long.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's literally like three people in a car.
Oh wow.
So it's, and they're backed up one after the other, so you have to read through this, and as soon as you're done, the next one's already in front of you.
So did you guys rotate?
Yeah, we, we would have to, as soon as I was done, she would take over, and as soon as she was done, I would, and then you'd have a gap where it's like, you know, 300 feet between floats, and you're just sitting there now, and it's like, what is this?
What is this?
There were moments that, yeah, it was hard to keep up, I heard a few people yell hi, shout out if you did, but yeah, I was, oh gosh, it was a mess at a point, it was fun, super fun, I loved it, but.
Kyler wants to go back.
Hectic.
Invite the guy back, he loved it.
I, I already am in talks to do it again next year.
Wow, getting a raise?
I got a gift card out of it that I didn't expect, that was awesome, I was expecting to get a free ticket to the fair, which, because it's, so Kyler doesn't like busy stuff, so because it's the Saturday of the parade and it's always busy that day, I was just like, yeah, I'm not gonna go.
Nice.
And then they gave me a gift card instead, which was awesome, take that as a win and a half.
Yeah, no, that's awesome, and then.
You been out yet? No, you couldn't have.
I have not been to, to the fair yet, I plan on going today.
Yeah, we're going together first.
No, we are not. That is not happening.
I do plan, yeah, I'm gonna go today.
We might see each other.
We might, we'll, we'll probably awkwardly be like, hi.
I'm never awkward.
I'm awkward.
You're not, we're never awkward dude.
I always think I am, but it's not ever that bad.
Yeah, okay, so what are you, what's the plan for the fair?
So I'm gonna head out there, I'm going with a buddy, we're gonna wander.
You may be doing survey.
I might be doing the survey.
So if you see Kyler and you wanna participate in the survey, just hit him up.
Yep, I will have a barcode or QR code that you can scan, not park. I, I also.
City council was a good one.
Lisa Hermosillo and I have talked about doing some man on the ground interviews during the fair.
That'd be fun.
Gonna see how all that works.
Hey, we'll see you Lisa.
Exactly, well, we'll try to see if that happens, I don't know if it'll happen today, I was, I know the weather this morning was raining, I don't know what it's gonna look like the rest of the day.
It's gonna be beautiful.
Oh, well, perfect, then, so maybe it will, if not, I also plan on stopping by the K Hits 106.
Yes, friend of the show.
Yes, Joe and Tom broadcasting live from there, gotta go finally meet them in person.
They're good peeps.
They are, they're fantastic, love Joe, done a ton in the background, what about you?
What food?
Oh my gosh, I don't even know dude.
You don't have any idea, okay, so I'm going to.
I want all the food, I can't, I can't fit it in, there's so.
You can do it, I believe in you, so, I'm.
I have a story about that, but it's not appropriate. What are you doing at the, what are you doing at the fair?
About call it the zoo, he's using it, alright, so I'm kinda just, I'm there for the food, man.
Yeah, me too.
Getting cheese curds, getting lemonade, last night, we've, at 11 o'clock at night, I'm like, gee, did you find the lemonade dill? She's like, no, I didn't go find it, so she found it that night, so you have the lemonade dill, we've got the big, big lemonade dill, we're gonna get cheese curds, we're still limiting that there's no Wild Rice Burger, so I have no idea, I'm eating for my main course.
Yeah, same.
But, yeah, those are two things that are, oh, and mini donuts, that will be happening, we will avoid the funnel cakes.
It's fair, I, I think those are overrated.
I already said that.
I know, I think, yeah, like I, I love those cheese curds, it's always a good time, one of my favorite go-tos, there's a place that does a frozen cheese, frozen chocolate covered cheesecake on a stick, and gosh, that is a go-to for Kyler. So I, I think it was someone in K M O T was eating like a, one of those that was like.
You're gonna really shout them out today?
Caramel and.
Dill pickle pizza next to the grandstand.
That place is bang, and I went there last year, oh, that stuff was good, I wasn't ready for that.
Friend of the.
I, I went there, I was like, this is probably gonna be good, I gotta try it.
Dill pickle pizza, I've, I'll be honest, I just don't think that dill pickle pizza ever sounded good to me.
You gotta try it, even if you don't like pickles, take the pickles off, it's so good.
No, I hate the juice.
It's good though, on the pizza, you gotta try it, if I see you, I'm gonna bring you a pizza.
You're so kind, you're so kind.
It was, it's gonna be good though, always look forward, last year I ended up buying, like, so, last year they have this in, I think the northernmost commercial building, they had this like sports memorabilia thing where it's a silent auction, and the auction ends at the end of every day, and I, I didn't necessarily, you know, it was probably 1, 2 in the afternoon when we were going through there, and there was a couple things I liked that I put a bid down on, I wasn't expecting to win.
You left broke.
I did, yeah, I ended up buying, winning, I won.
Do you wanna know why, you won these things? I had no idea that was even there.
Exactly.
A lot of other people probably had no idea that was even there.
But hey, I have an autographed Dante Culpepper jersey, and I have a framed picture of Bob Barker punching Happy Gilmore.
Alright, so the framed picture might be alright, but the Dante Culpepper, like, that's as good as Firestarter.
It's beautiful.
Whatever, you don't even think that, that's the thing.
Of course I do, I love Dante Culpepper, I grew up with him.
Where'd you guys hang out?
Well, you know, he, he was a little better than me.
Oh, okay.
Grew up watching him, how about that, he's got a special place in my heart.
But the guy, the guy could throw it a mile, but couldn't hit the roadside of a barn.
I mean, some, that's why.
He was decent on an, on the GameCube, because that's when he was in his prime, was when the GameCube actually had football on it, and and he had the 90, like 97 throwing power and like, under 80 or right around 80 accuracy, but he could run 82 speed or so, and so he was an alright pick, because he could get out of the pocket, and we all trash that throwing anyway, so.
Run around and then you just bomb it.
Bomb it, or you run.
Yeah, and it's, it's a win, cause that's.
That Culpepper was one of those guys that was better on the Xbox, there's just certain quarterbacks that just have the perfect, are the perfect Xbox player, you don't look at the 90s, because if you have a quarterback in the 90s on Xbox, he probably is slow, because he's a good quarterback, but it's really hard to play quarterback on the Xbox, so you get somebody that's got like an 82, 84 speed, got a pretty strong arm, decently accurate, and is low 80s overall, probably one of the best.
Especially back in the day then too, he could just run around and exploit the game a little bit.
Right, yeah, that's perfect, man.
Those were the days, him and Michael Vick, those were the days.
But Mike Vick was a cheat code, like that, 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 you can't put them in the same category.
Fun to play with, fun to play with, there we go, they were both cover athletes of Madden.
Yeah, 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 isn't that crazy that Culpepper was a cover athlete?
Like Madden 01 or 02, something like that.
Crazy stuff, man.
Throwback right there dude.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, fair time, so I don't plan on spending like 3, $400 on silent auction bidding this year, spend on just wasting all my money on food.
That's much better decision, alright, let's go to a break and then let's talk about real stuff.
City council coming up in a minute and a half here.
In the demanding world of oil and gas, precision, safety and efficiency are non-negotiable. Unmanned operator drone services revolutionizes how you monitor, inspect and manage your operations. With cutting-edge technology and expert operators, we deliver real-time data, detailed reports and actionable insights for our valuable clients. Why risk the safety of your team or waste precious time? Our drones access even the most challenging areas with ease, reducing downtime and enhancing safety across your sites. We take the guesswork out of your projects by offering LiDAR mapping and inspection services, so that your projects stay safe, on budget and on time. Unmanned operator drone services, where technology meets safety, precision and efficiency. Contact us today to elevate your operations.
Enjoy Minot's finest authentic Mexican cuisine with a view at mi Mexico, the rooftop patio is open and ready for you to enjoy a margarita or other cool refreshment along with genuine mouth-watering Mexican entrees, mi Mexico, South Broadway.
Uh, today's a good day.
It's a beautiful day.
You want my hot take?
Yeah, go for it, hit us with the hot take.
You went early with your hot takes, I'll go early with mine.
It was relevant.
Uh, what was my hot take again? No, FDR, uh, president that did the most damage out of any president in the last hundred years, not including current presidents, cause it's too early to tell.
It's probably, so I, I, I. It's probably, so I, I, I think I, I, is it gonna be a hot take? Yes. Is it going to be? Well, here's the thing, because FDR president for four terms. Uh, he served in about thirteen years of those four, sixteen total he would have had. No one else obviously as a president has ever come close to that. No one served more than two terms. Just the sheer amount that he had and was able to do in that time allows him to have done things that now in hindsight can look bad or look good. Depends on your perspective of it.
With Drew Wilson.
Yeah, that's my, yeah, a hundred percent.
So and I, and I think I before the show, I think I said it was the one that had the most, yeah, influence. It was influence on there and then I went with damage on live because I couldn't remember the word influence. But um, but like when you look at the things that he did. So you have the kind of good Camp David. He called it something different, but Camp David. That was, that was a positive. Then you go to the negative stuff.
Well, how about this? One other one, just the way he led the country through World War Two.
Yeah.
Not, not talking about.
Generally it was good.
Yeah, not talking about specific policies, just generally.
If there was ever a president that wanted to consolidate power because he loved it so much, it was him.
Yeah, a hundred ten percent there.
He loved power once he got into it and obviously that shown even by him serving more than two terms, um, which was the precedent precedent still. Although uh, his uncle or yeah, his uncle went after that too.
Well, and there was a caveat. There's we, I could talk for hours on that, but.
Anything Teddy did was all right. I get it.
There's caveat. Okay, so here's what happened. When Teddy took over in nineteen oh one, uh, it was about a six, eight months into uh, McKinley's term when McKinley was assassinated. Um, Roosevelt wasn't his VP for McKinley's first term, uh, because he died in office. And then so when Roosevelt came back from the Spanish American war in eighteen ninety eight, ran for governor of New York that year, won. Two years in, he gets promoted to the vice presidency. McKinley dies less than a year in. Roosevelt takes over, serves out the remainder of that first term, gets elected to his own term outright in nineteen oh four. And then as he gets reelected, he comes out either that night or the next day or something and says, I won't run for election again. And at that, so he, he only was elected to one term. However, if you look at the modern day constitution, how it's set up, uh, he would have not been eligible to run for that uh, nineteen oh eight election anyways, but he took himself out of it from the start, regretted it, didn't like how his handpicked success for William Howard Taft was doing it. So then nineteen twelve rolls around and he tries to jump in the party again. Splits the vote and allows Woodrow Wilson to become president.
Yeah.
It all ties back into that Woodrow Wilson thing.
He wasn't great. He was Woodrow Wilson.
Yeah, so if we, so if we wanna look at how Roosevelt shaped the modern, you know, new world order after World War Two with the development of the United Nations, which obviously was finalized and really implemented by Truman. But uh, Roosevelt laid a lot of that groundwork with how the Allies were built in World War Two. Uh, and how that's just transpired into the Cold War. After that, again, Truman was, had a heavy hand in a lot of that as well. But just, just how things have been able to transpire over the last eighty years because of that.
Yeah. So now we got a lot of a, a lot of um, government ran programs and some of them, I understand that some of them are almost necessary to get us out of where we were in the economic, like it wasn't good. And you look at his ability to communicate with the people, it was insane.
Yeah.
Like he, he created new.
Fireside chats.
The fireside chats. Yeah. Would we have the same access? Would the press have the same access to the White House if it wasn't for uh, Roosevelt? And then his wife going in uh, nearly every day communicating with the people, putting out a little memo, like just, just the amount that they tried to include the people in. I think that's something that we have lost. But on the backside of that, felt like he was just going after power, trying to stack the Supreme Court, which I think he was.
He was, he was the last one that expanded the Supreme Court.
Yeah.
Went from seven to nine judges under him. So Bob Dole, no, Dole pineapple whip. I saw Dole, I got excited. That's not talking about Bob Dole. No, that pineapple whip at the fair, that stuff is A plus. My mom would always.
Gotcha. Yeah, my wife mentioned that. Yeah.
Continue.
So interesting, probably a bad hot take, but that's my hot take for the day.
It's, it was fun. I agree. You gave me like five minutes to just.
Yeah. All right. Let's talk about something real. Let's talk about city council.
Council last night. Yes.
Yeah, that was, that was a marathon. Obviously, obviously we went over a huge headline right out of the gate. Harold Stewart will be moving on.
I don't think today we're gonna dive too deep into the, because last night, one of the big things that came out was the budget, uh, the rollout of the preliminary budget.
We're digesting such thing.
It's, I don't know if we're gonna dive all the way in. A couple headlines. Um, it's last year it was at about two hundred twenty five million. This year it's down to about two hundred and eleven million. So a total budgetary decrease, but a lot of that from what it sounded like has to do with decrease in federal contributions to the flood. Uh, as well as there was another, Nas is starting to roll, roll back as well. So that's where a lot of that comes from. And then one of the interesting things, and this is again, this is all preliminary, nothing is anywhere near set in stone. Um, to be able to get the budget that they have this year. They had to, at least as of now, raise the mills and that's where the interesting kind of conversation came yesterday. It's um, the mills were raised and it went above the thought, the dollar figure that was thought could be that three percent cap that was instituted. And it sound like there's some loopholes and some workarounds and there's some stuff that I, 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 we, we gotta figure out a little bit better before we start diving in on that.
I already hate the three percent cap.
Yeah, it's already making issues. We're already.
It already makes no sense.
We're already trying to do our best to find loopholes for it.
It's just so low. Could you imagine if like already it's gonna be difficult for Minot? But I know, and I know it's been talked about already ad nauseam, but could you imagine if you're a Washburn, North Dakota?
Yeah.
Like what? Three percent. Oh, yeah.
Budget by like fifty grand a year.
Yeah, you can't hire anybody.
No, you're stuck with what you're at. And that was part of where this was turning into now too. It's when we're gonna start cutting stuff, we're going to either at this point, we're not trying to cut jobs. So we're either gonna cut potential jobs or we're gonna cut a lot of like training and requests, like equipment requests or equipment replenishment for these people. We're gonna try to make do with what we have for a longer period of time and.
Well, even they, when they cut back more of the police officer positions out of the budget.
Yeah.
Knowing that they still need them, but to get those built into the budget now, it's gonna be a tall task because it's gonna mess up the number so bad.
Exactly. It's gonna be a lot harder to do.
It's like ninety thousand dollars that they're gonna have to delete somewhere else.
Yeah.
And delete.
That's the thing. Where, where are you gonna start trying to find that money from? Well, there was a couple. Again, didn't mean to get this deep into it even as we are now, but there was a couple of points that uh, city manager Harold Stewart made like, hey, if you wanna make these things happen without raising the property tax back up, you know, we could take away some of the road construction that we're doing, uh, we could, because it's up to twelve million, up from eleven million last year as of right now. There's a couple of other avenues along those lines and it's gonna be, there's a lot of discussion that are gonna be had and the new mayor and the new city council member are going to be. I mean, it's gonna.
And the new city manager.
And a new city manager. Yeah. Because by the time budget rolls around, uh, Harold will be gone.
Could you imagine if like every city manager just walked out because of the three percent cap?
Don't give them ideas.
Or at least from the major five cities.
Five, six, seven major municipalities in North Dakota. That would be, but don't give anyone any ideas, Jonathan. No.
Oh, it is a good idea. Maybe that would get the attention of the state and say, hey, this is a terrible idea. Go figure something else out, please.
Heck, yeah.
They came and figure out how to undo their veto. So I don't think they're gonna figure out how to undo a cap.
Intent's all that matters with that. So.
And I don't think the intent it was for this to happen though.
Tent was to slower property tax. Yeah, we'll do that one later. We'll do that one later.
Wanna hear this?
The intense to lower property taxes are to put a cap on it. Now there's a way to, there's, there's apparently a potential loophole to do that. So we can still raise it. And it's like, what are we doing? What's the point of any of this?
Well, it's to minimize in the raising of property taxes.
And it's such an arbitrary.
All right, so.
Let's start at the top.
Yeah, let's go.
Obviously Harold Stewart left. Uh, that was the big, big thing at the top. Fall, um, you, you have a couple basic things go through. You have a public appearance thing that no one showed up for. Uh, then you had the magic funds going to ADT food.
Yeah.
I thought this was interesting. This wasn't, I didn't know this. Uh, ADT food is one of the largest gluten free flour producers in the country.
Incredible.
And they're working to become the largest gluten free flour processor or maker in the North American market, which is incredible.
Did they bribe the council?
No, I hope with what free flour.
Yeah, before the vote, they put that up in front of every council member.
They did. I do remember that because I, so I didn't get there at the start last night. I, I rolled in at like an hour and change in and I just saw those boxes sitting up there. I was like, what the heck is that?
Uh, while I was having, I was like, ah, he bribed the council, buddy. Not sure about this.
Careful there. But no, it was, it's, it's a neat little project.
You didn't really bribe the council, to be clear.
They're, they're expanding the the company. I, I really like what ADT is trying to do here. And this is something that's awesome to Minot, I think.
Then they had the flood plan update and uh, that was tabled, gonna get taken care of two weeks. No, it was not tabled or is not taken care of in two weeks. They got part of it approved, but there's the situation that they're still talking with the homeowners or landowners uh, in the area to figure out what the best resolution would be. Um, that's something that we talked about after last city council meeting.
Because they're, they were trying to coming in, split it into a northern and a southern section, uh, and they were trying to get uh, at last night's meeting, the northern section approved, which included for um, property buyouts that it's pretty much a guarantee it's gonna happen regardless.
Yeah.
And the way it ended up going was council one and two, rather than do half and half. Like, hey, if we're gonna buy these properties, buy them regardless, we'll approve to go do that and then finalize the plans. And when you get a whole plan finalized and brought back to us, that's when we're gonna start to really get things going.
Top of the morning to you too, Marie.
Good morning. It was rainy here in Minot today, but yeah, that's kind of the flood plan update. Expect to hear that. Uh, there's no necessarily any immediate timeframe on it, but I, there, there's still negotiations. Things are happening and the properties that need to be bought out will be bought out at this point. They're gonna start those negotiations.
Right.
After that, um, there's a grant application for installation readiness. That's pretty much gonna map out um, the surrounding area of Minot Air Force Base, which hasn't been done in like ten, twelve years, something like that, and assess who those owners are. Um, assess their readiness to the base, how much time it would take, what they kind of use. And if there's any potential that whoever those owners are could be, you know, nefarious, I guess, for lack of a better term. Like the big thing that came up a few years was the Foo Fang plant.
Over in Grand Forks.
Forks. This is kind of something similar to look into those situations. And then from this, it looks like it can kind of be used as a stepping stone into uh, the Sentinel program, which is gonna be coming along uh, in the next couple of years where they can start, since they'll be in a pool pretty much where they can start looking at additional funding, uh, grant opportunities, things that'll come from that at that stage.
Seven, four, five was, uh, obviously there was an investment into more uh, police vehicles, cars. Um, but the conversation went and eventually surrounded the topic of local bids, which is a conversation that's been coming up a lot lately.
And, and I think we're gonna tie this, before we dive all the way in, we're gonna tie this into a later one that came up too. Uh, so after the budget process, there was uh, public appearances. There was a couple of interesting ones. Um, one about some bad property by, it sounded like Rose Hill Cemetery. The other was um, in regards to some conflict at the airport. After that, there was miscellaneous items and that's when Alderman Rob Fuller had two motions that he brought forward. We'll start with the easy one. Uh, it was the second one, frankly. Um, it was to change the time when the city council agenda comes out to instead of coming out the Thursday prior to the meeting on Monday. It would be to come out the Monday prior. So we have, they have a full week to look into things. Obviously things can always be added in at later times, but to have that initial.
Basically you got a prelim agenda.
And it sounded like they had been talking about this behind the scenes a little bit. So this is, and there wasn't any discontent from council on this. This one sounds like it'll probably happen. It's just a matter of, is it gonna be before or after the budget process?
Right, right. Makes sense.
So the second one, which was actually the first one, ties into that other issue that we were talking about prior, which is that economic development, local business, where bids go and Fuller motion to direct sales staff or direct staff to change how sales tax pennies are used and to add items to their percentages. So to change stuff around a little bit, so pretty much to change how the current ones are local, are listed and kind of consolidate some of those numbers. So now and, and how this would work, you, we would be funding uh, medic or police and fire through our sales tax dollars. It was a way to relieve off of the property taxes because I think right now like eighteen percent of uh, one penny of sales tax goes to uh, uh, property tax control anyways. So now we're really looking at some of the economic development and a lot of what would be taken away is some of those economic dollars, that stuff that goes to the facade project, things along those lines. And those would be transferred over into the funding for police and fire, especially so they can get some of the uh, equipment that they need or want that maybe wasn't available in the current budget because of some of the constraints that are necessary right now.
Makes sense, makes sense.
And so this kind of, I think, leads into one of the bigger conversations we'll have today. It's local business, economic development and how, how best to balance these things.
Yeah.
And how, how to prioritize fire and police emergency services versus uh, economic development in the city.
It seems like we spend a lot of money on economic development.
It does.
Through, through the city, through the chamber EDC and through visit Minot.
No, it's.
So yeah, I mean, it's very split up and it seems like they're not always all on the same page. It seems like they all have different initiatives and, and it's just whatever.
And maybe that's a good thing at times.
Maybe.
Maybe it's something that needs to be consolidated better. Maybe it's inefficient and I, I, I think so much of it is the stages we're going into now, we, we don't wanna lose progress on things we've done. So if there's something that's actively going, I don't think we can stop that. But also to go into the future with things, I, I, I don't, maybe this is a time where it is necessary to start looking at some of these things.
Yeah.
Not saying we completely eliminate them, but maybe we've restructured some stuff right now. This is the time to start looking at how we can better balance the scales on some of this.
So, so how do you feel? And, and this is just, it's one of those like so complex conversations. How do you feel about the prioritize, not prioritizing, but the, the local bid stuff? Because one of the arguments that we've heard a lot is you know, we go, we're tasked with spending this money wisely and those different sentiments. We can't go and spend, it might be fifteen thousand dollars more, but we can't do that if there's a better bid on the table. Okay, but and then the, the counter argument to that, a counter argument, maybe not the counter argument, but a counter argument is like, okay, well, let's roll it back to the childcare stuff where we go and just give out credits, whatever property tax credits, because you know, it's an issue. Okay, because we're, we're interested in helping citizens of Minot. So we're gonna go and give money back. In theory, we're gonna give money back to business owners.
Keep money in their pockets.
Keep money in their pockets. Okay. Give them the exception. So then, but then you're talking about like a two hundred fifty thousand dollar bid, whatever it might be. Um, where there's gonna be a trickle down effect into the city. And then we're like, no, we can't spend the extra fifteen thousand dollars there because because we, we gotta find the best price. We gotta be as conservative as we can in our spending of city dollars. How do you, do you feel like those things balance out where you can be on the different sides of each argument or, or is it some, and I, I have no idea. I'm not taking a side on this yet.
You know, this, this is something we're just kind of, we're bringing conversation up with it at this point because there's, there's so much depth to it, especially with this issue specifically. Um, it was new, what, like six new police cars were being purchased for uh, the city of Minot.
It's a hybrid.
Yep, one's a hybrid. Uh, they're all, all Ford. So you know, question, why can't Wesley's provide these? Well,
Right, yeah.
The issue with this specifically is that the outfitting that happens takes.
That was one of the issues.
Yeah.
The other one was Wesley said they just can't match the price.
Yeah, that was, which Wesley's chose not to. Wesley's was specifically contacted on this issue and because of the logistics involved, they couldn't even come close to matching the price. So they didn't even submit a bid. And a large, not the whole reason, a large portion of that comes from the outfitting of the vehicles with the necessary equipment. Um, that would have to be either outsourced to someone else. Wesley's would have to try to take it on, which may or may not be something they're used to doing. Um, and right now the company that's used for that is based out of Minnesota, but that's something that they specialize in. They outfit emergency vehicles, police cars across the country. I know uh, there's a company locally here in the area that does similar things. So that's maybe in the future, something.
Always even where.
Yeah, I didn't either. That's something that could be looked towards in the future, maybe if they're able to do this in a, you know. And again, to go circle back a little bit to the whole overarching picture of it, it's at what point do we want to save this extra fifteen to twenty thousand versus go back into the city. And I, I think so much of this, I think it was ultimate blessing, made a great point. It's we, we wanna save the money whenever we can, but these local companies should at least be given the opportunity to match. And if they choose not to match, that's fine. We'll go with the cheaper one then. But if they do end up matching, well, then I mean, keeping that money locally is probably typically the best option.
Right, yeah, it's fire, uh, Patriot Fire and Safety. Believe is the company and their website is not completely clear on everything that they do. But if it's to be believed, it says that they work with police interceptors. So, yeah, I, I don't know. I, and, and the thing is, what, what I'm hearing is that the business owners are split on it too. Some business owners are like, we're not the lowest. Don't even give us the bid. Other business, other business owners are like, give us a chance. Just give us a chance to match it. So I think it's a little bit. So I think it's a little bit on industry. I think, I think though, where we're seeing the difference is, is the ones that are, if you're selling a good, you're like, if we can't, we're gonna give you our best price and if we, we're not interested in matching. Because they're, they're not gonna go into the negative.
No.
Because it's a straight-up good.
Yeah, you're not gonna lose money on this.
On us, on the services, I feel like that's where people are like, give us a chance. Because we might would take a lower hourly rate on our service that time, just.
Just to get in the game, kind of.
Gives our guys a chance to continue to work, whatever. I feel like that's kind of the difference, where we're seeing, uh, business owners um, react differently to it.
No, I think that's a good.
So, so to put that meat on that, the cars, Wesley's is, we're not interested in, we, we know we can't beat that price, so we're not interested in.
Like, even if we could match the unit price, we can't.
It's just not worth it.
The install isn't gonna be able to.
Yeah, but they don't have to do the install, but.
That's the thing, because then it's gonna be an ex, so much extra money at that point.
But the other company doesn't do the install either.
Well, it's, it's third-partyed out, yeah. But they're already in Minnesota at that point.
Right, yeah.
That's so much of the travel cost of the whole thing.
But I don't think they can beat the unit price.
I, I, I think you're right with that.
So, so they're not interested in going zero margin on it just to get it done. Like, go, go do it to somebody else. Because it does them no, evidently does them no good just to sell units. Whereas the paving stuff, which is, uh, the other place that we've heard this come up a lot, I think just from the feedback that I've heard, it sounds like they may be more interested in if it was the right service to maybe not get as big of a marg, have a, as big a margin on that.
They'd be accepting of, you know, like you said, that margin being reduced a little bit, so long as they can get their foot in the game at that point.
Right, and have work. So, I don't know. I, I know that there's gonna be more conversations had on that. It sounds, that's what it sounds like council is in a direction where they're going to have, headed in a direction where they're gonna have more conversations on it. And I think that is the distinguishing factor for the two arguments, though, is look at it based off of, is it a good? Or is it a service? And then see how business owners react around those. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I, 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 I see where you're going with that. I think that's a good way to kind of start with it too. That way you're able to kind of see how, like you said, the different industries kind of react to these things. Because it's, it's a, obviously, you're not gonna be getting a ton of local companies trying to bid in on some of these, you know, massive flood reconstruction projects that don't have the capacity to do it.
Yeah.
But like you said, if it's something that a road needs to be repaved, uh, or reconstructed, whatever the reason is, if you're putting an open bid to it and now you're giving the local place the chance to bid, I think there's, there should be nothing wrong with that.
Right, and, and I, I mean, I.
The only detractor I can see at that point is, you can make an argument maybe that, you know, if an outside company sees that we'll offer, uh.
We've talked about this.
Yeah, the ability for a local company to match them, maybe they're not even gonna try to throw their hat in the ring anymore. And at that point, I think that we cross that bridge when we come there. Uh, we have to, I, I, I think.
But just don't cross the Third Street Bridge, because that one's probably shut down.
It's iffy, right. Only if you go south, it's okay. If you go north, you can't.
Not a good idea.
But it's safe going south.
Good.
Which, that's gonna be like, I, I, I think the rough number that was kind of just thrown out, out there was like sixty million dollars to replace the bridge.
Oh, we can put that into next year's budget. That should be within the three percent.
Something like that, right? It'll be easy, man.
Very good, very good. Well, we're gonna break down the budget to the best of our abilities next Tuesday.
I think so.
Yeah, that's the plan at least.
I think as of right now, we're leaning towards, uh, we got a guest coming on Thursday, haven't confirmed, but we're, I think that's the way it's gonna be. And also, I, I did something on Saturday after the parade.
That's crazy. Good for you, buddy.
I know, that's, that's why we came up here today and everything was all broken, because I came up.
Yeah, so now we gotta wonder what the recording sounds like for that.
I went and listened, it sounded fine.
Okay.
Day of, so, um, expectation, maybe sometime this week, I'm gonna have a video coming out with, um, former legislator Marvin Nelson.
And what would you guys talk about?
Uh, so much to talk about with Marvin. But we, specifically in this video, we went over the, a little bit of the Ethics Commission. We went over, uh, some energy issues here in the state. And the biggest thing that we tackled, we went over the history and, uh, he broke down a lot of what's going on with the redistricting maps here in the state.
Yeah, that's a huge deal.
That's, that, he was a former legislator of one of the districts affected. Um, he told, he talks about how the census change in twenty twenty, um, likely affected a lot of these numbers, uh, where the native and rural communities in the area are probably massively undercounted. And that led to the split, which has now been something that the local district judge ruled in favor or opinioned in favor of the tribes. However, uh, there was an argument made that because of the voting issue, it can only be brought up by someone from the Department of Justice, so that's why it's now up at the Supreme Court.
The Supreme Court, well, sounds like that would be a good interview to listen to.
Yeah, be sure to check that out.
Way to go, bro.
I, I try. I do something sometimes.
Yeah, good job. Well, we'll be back on Thursday, nine AM. Um, hopefully have a little guest on.
That's in two days.
That's in two days. Otherwise, you can see us at the fair. We're ramping up stuff as, what's gonna happen in two weeks?
There's something going on in town. It is, two weeks from today, there's an election for mayor, finally.
It's just one of those North Dakota pastimes. You gotta love it. It's a summer pastime in North Dakota.
Elect a new mayor.
We've had two this, this year.
This year alone, yeah.
This summer.
June and now August.
Yep.
Again, make sure you get out to vote. Uh, you can always drop by the Ward County Administration Building, pick up that ballot, uh, that absentee ballot, and you don't even have to go home and mail it. You can fill it out there in person and drop it off.
It's wonderful.
It is.
Tyler, have you done it?
Like I said, I'm gonna vote the day of.
I know. I know you've said that, and you're gonna continue to say that.
I am, and you're gonna continue to ask me.
Yes, right.
Done the absentee ballot. No, I have not.
Yeah, very good, very good. I haven't either.
So, because we're gonna both go that day, and then we're gonna do exit polling.
Then we're gonna do exit polling. It's gonna be a blast. And then that night, we're gonna go live.
Live for a couple hours.
We hope you join us live. That is gonna be a good time. We're gonna be working on that, uh, layout here soon.
Yeah, because as far, like, we are the fastest-growing political podcast in the state of North Dakota. And as far as I know, we will be the only one bringing you Minot live coverage of the ele- of the mayoral election that night continuously.
Yeah, whenever you get breaking news, just think of us.
At least that night, two weeks from now.
Just think of us. Whenever there's breaking news, just think of us.
Think of the Dakotan and Kyler and Jonathan.
Yeah.
Because we're here for you.
And if you wanna think of us more often, you can just go ahead and hit that subscribe button.
Oh, look at that transition, that was fantastic.
We do thank you for watching today's episode. We hope that you have a great rest of your day. We hope you enjoy the fair this week.